Good evening, and I'd like to call to order our Pickle City Commission meeting, Tuesday, May 21, 2019. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please? Mayor Hines?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Short? He's absent. Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner, vote.
Here.
I make a motion that we excuse Dave.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Commissioner Short is excused. I will make the announcement that Commissioner Short has resigned from the Pickle City Commission because of a work, a job that he now has, he is unable to attend meetings. His resignation is effective June 1st, so we need a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, the motion passes, and we regretfully accept Commissioner Short's resignation. We give thanks for his time and service on the commission. So now we move to our announcement portion of the meeting. Do we have any announcements this evening?
I do have one. Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My name is Larry Hamilton, I live at 1104 Maplewood Drive, and last August, I appeared before the city commission to implore the commission and Pickle residents to support the call of President Trump in acknowledging the 400th anniversary observance of the arrival of forced African enslaved laborers into Jamestown, Virginia. I shared with the commission just how uniquely distinct Pickle was in hosting the kind of events and the president had called for from the perspective of the Randolph narrative in the Upper Miami Valley. I was encouraged by commissioners to seek the direct support of the Edison State Community College and Pickle City Schools. That support has lagged or faltered and been deferred to the start of the next school year. But the inaugural event in the From Enslavement to Empowerment observance has already taken place at the Randolph-founded church site located on Park Avenue. As I indicated last August, I have many ideas as to how to make this observance a year-round multiple-activity observance, and I wanted to stop in again and ask you, the leaders of the community, what you would like to do in a leadership capacity, and to remind you of the resolve that was shared in Resolution Number R-110-07, which reads in part, "Whereas the residents of Pickle, Ohio, have long recognized the vital importance of diversity and the historical character of this community, and having developed a longstanding tradition in caring and compassion since the arrival of the Randolph freedmen, and whereas the city of Pickle acknowledges the need to take a leadership role in eliminating historical patterns of bias and discrimination, and expand the future growth of our community in offering everyone the right to live in dignity, respect, and honor, and whereas the city of Pickle desires to work with individuals and community organizations seeking the empowerment of all communities and encouraging their greater municipal participation in the decision-making process, and whereas the city of Pickle will seek to expand ownership identity of municipal properties in the future to those individuals belonging to groups that have traditionally been denied consideration, and whereas the city of Pickle will embrace the philosophy of recognizing individual greatness through promoting equality of opportunity and encouraging other public as well as private institutions to follow the principle." So I would simply like to announce that I remain totally committed, and I seek the additional support and empowerment of like-minded residents of the city of Pickle to observe this 400th anniversary observance of the arrival of African enslaved labor at Jamestown, Virginia. Thank you very much.
Larry, as Commissioner Lee and myself were at that Black History Month at Bryan Hamilton's Church, Transformed Life, where we talked and a committee was formed that day, and I know in speaking with people on the committee, Marva Archibald and other people, the end of the school year was tough to get things going because of graduation activities and whatever, but I do know that there is planning and will be planning for some type of event in the fall. So know that you do have the support of this commission, you have the support of the schools in Edison to do some type of event in the fall, and as I said to you in a recent email, you know, as we get together as a group around the table and have all of our voices there, that is the best way to put together an event such as this. So I appreciate you bringing it forward and reminding us of the importance of remembering this. It is an important part of our history, it's a very important part of the history of this community, but we look forward to this fall and to the event that will happen at Edison.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I also want to remind people that the effort is a ongoing and multiple-event activity, not just something that is restricted to a particular point or time of the year. So we want to encourage all of those who have some skin in the game, so to speak, to be involved, to step up and take a leadership role, not necessarily in support of one particular individual, but as leaders of the community. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other announcements?
Good evening, Commission. My name is Lorna Swisher, I'm the Executive Director of Main Street Pickle, and I just wanted to come and thank the city of Pickle and the employees that were part of helping with the Taste of the Arts celebration that was held on May 10 in downtown Pickle. I cannot tell you the amazing support that we got from the city. Every single department that we interacted with was extraordinary, and the workers were just wonderful, and I just, from the bottom of my heart, want to thank the city of Pickle for their amazing support. Taste of the Arts is a free event that is supplied to the citizens of our community. We had multiple activities and events that evening, and it's all possible because of the amazing support that we got from the city of Pickle. So thank each and every one of the commissioners, especially Gary Huff and his staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lorna.
I do want to take this time to introduce Kirsten French. Kirsten, if you'd stand. She is our new city planner, and she comes to us from Vanate County, Florida, she was a planner there. She is a graduate of Ohio State University, a bachelor's degree, and also a master's from the University of North Carolina. She and her husband live here in Pickle, and we're thrilled to have them here, so we appreciate you being here tonight, Kirsten.
Any other announcements this evening? If not, we will move to the next piece of our agenda, which is the Resident Pride Awards for the spring, and you will see the houses up on the monitor as we acknowledge those residents that have earned this award this year. The first one is 601 North Downing Street, Jessica and Jerry Elliott, and 640 West North Street, Tracy and Brent McKinney, 220 West Green Street, Suzie and Wayne Pope, 1544 Edge Street, Robin and Mike Skaggs, 223 South Street, Brenda Leanne Welch. Do we have any of our Resident Pride winners here this evening? Well, even so, we do honor them and give thanks for taking pride in their residence here in the city, and you will see as you drive around, they will have the Resident Pride emblem in their yard for the next few months, and it just encourages all of us this time of year as we work to, just to keep up our property and to make it beautiful. So thank you for those residents that have been honored here. The next thing on our agenda is a proclamation for Bike Month here in the city of Pickle, and we have some members of Bike Pickle here, so I'd like to ask you to join me at the podium. If you guys want to stand here, or you can look out to the crowd. You're getting nervous. So here is our proclamation for Bike Month. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of many Americans, and whereas today millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent form of fitness, and a quality family recreation activity, and whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas the League of American Bicyclists and independent cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, and whereas the citizens of Pickle benefit from the availability of a complete transportation system that includes facilities dedicated to the safe and convenient movement of bicycle traffic. Now therefore, I, Catherine B. Hines, the mayor of the city of Pickle, Ohio, to hereby proclaim, May 2019 as Bike Month here in the city of Pickle, and I urge all of our citizens to enjoy bicycling fun and to recognize the importance of bicycle safety. And I give it to the president of Bike Pickle, Susan Curtis, there you go. And if you want to say a few things.
My name is Susan Curtis, I'm president of Bike Pickle Association. We're part of the Miami Valley Bike Association. We just want to thank the commissioners, the city of Pickle, and all of the employees that work so hard to keep our trails in good shape so that we can bike on them. A couple of things that Bike Pickle has done over the last year, we had 900 students in the Pickle City Schools go through a bike safety program, we also had the Pickle Catholic Schools go through the bike safety program, and we also participated in the Kiwanis Bike Rodeo, teaching bike safety to youngsters in the city so that they can bike safe on our streets. A few things we have coming up, we have some slow rolls, just easy bike riding all over our city so that people can get familiar with the city, the first one being June 10, and we will be embarking on the new path that goes across the river there on Ash Street, and several others then planned throughout in July, August, and September. So we encourage everyone to join us. Thank you.
There are two items on the consent agenda tonight, the approval of the minutes from the April 16, 2019 Regular City Commission meeting, and a resolution appointing Wayne Davy to the Civil Service Commission for a term to expire March 1, 2020.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. And now we move to old business. The first and only piece of old business we have is a second reading of an ordinance, ordinance number 3-19.
An ordinance amending Chapter 51 of the Pickle Municipal Code Sewers.
Mr. Melville will provide the staff report.
Thank you. As mentioned in the first reading, this sewer use ordinance changes came about because of EPA industrial pre-treatment audit, and in that audit, they had findings and recommendations that we turned back to the EPA as a program modification which they had approved, and then our legal has approved as well. And in some of those changes, we added some definitions, general prohibitions, local limits, clause additions, and then some enforcement procedures along with confidentiality and some records retentions as well.
And basically, the EPA is telling us we need to do this, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance?
What does the ordinance do?
If you have a question, come up to the podium, please.
My name is Bill Jock, I'm from your ward, the fifth ward, and what exactly does this ordinance do? I'm curious.
It complies with state requirements on how language has to be in our wastewater treatment.
Oh, so that's just a language issue? Okay.
Anything else? Okay, this will stand as our second reading of this ordinance. And now we move to our new business. The first piece of new business is Resolution Number R-49-19.
A resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of 15 KV cable for the power system.
Mr. Krieger will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Including this year's power system budget, our number of projects that require the largest current capacity-carrying cable that we currently have in inventory, it's 750 MCM copper, 15,000-volt cable. Couple of the projects that I'm referring to are the interconnection of the new Manure Solar Field and the utility relocation work that is required by the Riverfront Redevelopment Project at Lock Nine Park. So as required for purchases of this size, the purchase was advertised, sealed bids were received, bids were opened, and we had two responsive bidders. Brownstown Electric Supply provided the best and lowest bid, and we have a long history of working with Brownstown, they're one of our main distributors, and they've always done a good job providing product to meet delivery dates. This item was presented to the Pickle Energy Board on April 23, and the Pickle Energy Board recommends city commission approval of this purchase. And basically, this cable will be used to replenish inventory once our projects are completed this year.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. The next on the docket is Resolution Number R-50-19.
A resolution awarding a contract to Polcat, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $150,000 for 2019 for removal and disposal of lime residual from the city of Pickle Water Plant Lime Lagoon with the option to renew for 2020 and 2021.
Mr. Jennings will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Every three years, we go out for bid to have our lime lagoon cleaned out. This year, the lowest bid, and actually the only bid, was from Polcat Incorporated. They have provided this service for us, they've been the low bidder for at least the last 12 years. They do a lot of communities around the area, they're very well-equipped and do an excellent job for us. We budget every year $150,000 out of our budget for this project. This year, the bid will be for this year, and then with the option to extend the contract for the next two years, as long as there isn't a price increase, that is over 5%.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, what do they do with the lime after they take it?
They dry it out, and then they go and apply it to farmers' fields.
Okay. Seven other places didn't respond to the bid?
No, we sent this bid to eight companies in total, and three years ago, or when we did this previous, Polcat was the only one that bid on it also, and again this year. It's quite the process for them to do this, and it takes a lot of equipment. He has a massive amount of equipment, so a lot of companies, it's just, it's like a really big project for them. Polcat actually does the city of Marysville, city of Dayton, city of Troy, city of Middletown, he's got a full-scale operation, so.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-51-19.
A resolution requesting consent to award a contract to LJ Dewise Company, Inc., for construction services for the 2019 catch basin replacement project.
I'll call on Mr. Shelley.
Good evening. As the commission knows, a couple of years ago, we visited each of the approximately 2,500 catch basins in the city and rated each one of them per their condition, and we've been, since then, trying to replace all of the really degraded catch basins. This year, we went out for bid, we had one bidder, LJ Dewise, and they're going to replace 104 catch basins for us. The cost of the project is $343,510, that includes a 10% contingency. We've got in the stormwater budget, $143,510, the remaining $200,000 is being supplied through a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission. The grant money doesn't arrive until July at the earliest, so work won't be beginning until midsummer, and it'll be completed before the end of November.
Great, thank you. And how many catch basins? We have over 200, is it right, in the city?
Close to 2,500.
2,500, I was gonna say, okay, 2,500.
If we had 200, we'd be done by now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. Add another zero to it, okay. All right, any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this? Not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-52-19.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a revolving loan fund waiver request to use community development block grant economic development revolving loan funds to pay for the update to the city of Pickle's analysis of impediments to Fair Housing Choice Report as required by the Ohio Development Services for the program year 2019.
I'll call on Ms. Ranely to give the staff report.
Thank you. In order to comply with the program year 2019 grant cycle for community development block grant funds, we are required by the Ohio Development Services Agency to update our current analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. The update will be in effect for up to five years, so that will be July 1 of 2024. The report is due this July, July 2019, by July 1. The revolving loan funds that we are asking to use, the city manager simply has to sign off on a waiver to access those funds. These funds are set up to loan to businesses for upgrades, different things for their businesses, and we need to sign the waiver in order to use it for admin purposes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-53-19.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Ohio Cat for the purchase of a Caterpillar wheel loader for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Brookhart.
Good evening. The Public Works Department would like to purchase a brand-new 926M Caterpillar loader from Ohio Cat of Troy. We budgeted $175,000 for the cost of this loader, and the price for the new loader will be $149,488. This loader is on the state of Ohio purchasing contract, and that competitively bids equipment like this loader. We also looked at two other loaders along with this, one, a John Deere, and a Volvo, and they were both priced higher on the STS contract compared to this Cat loader that we demoed. This loader is replacing a 2004 loader that we currently had that had over 15,000 hours on it. This loader can be delivered 10 days after a purchase order is submitted to Ohio Cat.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, is this loader about the same size as our old one? Bigger, or is it the same size?
It's slightly bigger than our previous loader, with some of the material that we handle out of the compost facility that will allow us to move some of our hard fill easier than we've previously been able to. It does have the same-sized bucket, it has a three-yard bucket, similar to the bucket that we had on our other loader.
What happened to the old one?
The old one, due to the age, had several maintenance issues, and I got an estimate back to make several repairs that needed to be done, and some future repairs that were going to have to be done well exceeded what the loader was worth. We also, we looked at trading it in and got an estimate back for that, ended up selling it on Gov. deals, and got an additional $8,000 more than what the trade-in estimate was. So we did make out better by selling that piece of equipment on Gov. deals. We've been very fortunate on equipment that we've been able, older equipment that we've sold on Gov. deals has brought a very good amount of money compared to trading it some in, some of it in, so it was a good deal for us to do that.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-54-19.
A resolution for consent to enter into a contract with Fishbeck Thompson Carr and Huber, Inc., for professional services pursuant to Ohio EPA Water Treatment Asset Management Planning.
Mr. Shelley.
The commission might remember that last year, late last year, Ohio EPA finalized a rule requiring the water treatment plant to have an asset management plan. Very briefly, asset management, planning, being a new requirement from EPA, it has 19 requirements detailing everything from what types of water mains you have, how old they are, down to how you exercise your valves. As I said, it's a new requirement, and we're wrapping our heads around it, along with other cities. We entered into a contract last year for just under $10,000 with FTC and H. They started us off on our road to asset management. They got about 30% of the requirements done last year, and water treatment budgeted this year $50,000 to continue on some of the outstanding requirements in this new mandate from Ohio EPA. We have before you a resolution to enter into a new contract with FTC and H. We have decided to move forward with the fixed asset list, which is the most complicated part of the asset management plan. Very briefly, what they're going to be doing is, at the water intakes, the water treatment plant, booster station, and storage tanks, they will be visually surveying, taking photographs of major pieces of equipment. will be visually surveying, taking photographs of major pieces of equipment, recording things like nameplate information, incorporating maintenance schedules, manufacturer's information when it comes to useful life for each of those assets. They'll be doing the same for the water mains. Then they'll be working with Ohio EPA. The state has a formula they use to determine a useful life evaluation along with a criticality evaluation. In essence, what that means is for each of those assets that they're going to, that they're going to visit for us and, and get data off of, the end result will be a database showing us how much of the useful life is left in that asset if it were to fail, what is, what type of exposure from a criticality standpoint, from a public safety standpoint, are we exposed to, and what is the business risk of that asset failing? For instance, how much does it take to, to replace it? Are there other costs associated with, with that asset failing? Think about a water main versus a valve, for instance. So, as I said, we've budgeted $50,000. The quote from FTC and H. is $53,750. So, we're going to use the $50,000 that Mr. Freisteller has, has budgeted. We also have a $10,000 grant for asset management from the state of Ohio, and that will, will go towards that, that $53,750 fee from FTC and H. as well. They have told me the process will take the rest of the year, so we're looking at the, the final product again by the end of November. Are there any questions?
Will they have it done?
They will have the fixed asset list done. That is just one piece of asset management. We'll have to keep working on it in 2020 and beyond.
Okay, how much did we spend on that last year?
$9,500.
Pardon?
$9,500.
And you said they got about 30% done?
Roughly speaking, yes.
And again, this is what the EPA is asking us to do, is that...
Us and every other water system in the state, yes.
Well, the only bad thing is, is last time we got 30% for 10 grand. Now, we aren't going to get 70%, and it's still going to be 53. So, they must not have got 30% done in the first place.
Well, there are 19 requirements. They got whatever 30% of, of that is, they got eight or nine of them done.
I think we're entering to the largest components of that now, so the fixed asset, so that's quite a bit.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Or has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of our meeting, and I know we have quite a few people here tonight. So, I just want to remind people that we have, part of our ordinance for city commission meetings is five minutes. So, you're welcome to come to the podium, to address the commission, give us your name and your address and where you're from. But in order, if everybody wants to speak, we want to keep it to five minutes. So, we are now open for public comment.
My name is Jay Roman. I live on 406 West High. And let me start off first by saying thank you to city manager Huff from meeting with me last week and finance director. I appreciate you guys' time. And also, thank you to Chris for calling me a couple of weeks ago when he saw my issue. You're one of my favorite people on this planet, you and Mr. Jamison. We were together doing the Stand Against Addiction show in that heat all day. Once a year, I have a picture that comes up on my timeline feed of us getting doused in water, and it's one of my favorite messages.
Yes, we were, very wet.
Thank you guys very much for that. I appreciate that. The reason why I'm here today is, last month, actually, a month ago yesterday, I received a utilities bill that I did not agree with. I'd used less usage than the month prior, and yet somehow my bill was higher. So, when I called the office, I was told the reason why, and the reason why is really not that important. I just didn't agree with it. I was kind of angry at the time, so I went to social media, as most people do these days, and I created Citizens for Fair Pickway Utilities Pricing, and within a month, that page has amassed over 1,200 followers. Now, I run a site for my band. I run a wrestling fan page site. Nothing I've ever done has gotten up that fast, that quickly. We've also started a petition on change.org that has gotten 800 signatures in the same amount of time. So, as you guys can see, this is a pretty hot issue, which we have discussed prior, Mr. Huff. I think the general consensus is, is that most citizens think something isn't right with the system. We don't know what it is. This has been happening for a long time. The research that I've done has shown, all the way back to Mark Rohr, there were some things going on wrong with the utilities. The most recently was when Fox 45 was in this very room in 2015, doing a piece on it where a release was trying to. And also, again, last year, the same news center got the attention of a $1,000 utility bill that nobody could explain. I mean, this is a reoccurring thing here, and, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not vague enough to sit here and tell you that some of the issues could be usage, okay? We, we know that that is a case. It could be somebody's faulty, faulty refrigerator or toilet. That is possible. For the ones that have looked into it that can't explain, like myself, who received my bill today, and me and my girlfriend have both tried to curb our usage over the last month, and it's only $6 less than last month, it's unacceptable. Something isn't right here. There's something wrong with the system. And, and not only that, that's just my own personal experience. That's not including the stories I've heard from a local educator who wished to not be named, that a family's living in a hotel because they cannot pay their utility bills. That's very unacceptable, in my opinion. Someone else has came forward and said they had to get rid of their wedding ring and pawn it off so they could pay their utility bill, along with a guitar. I mean, these are, these are crazy, crazy amounts of bills that nobody can explain, and then the next month, it goes back to normal. And, and not only that, a lot of citizens are confused on exactly how their bills are structured. I wasn't even aware that you're charged $100 before you even use a single watt, or you even have a drip of water come out of your faucet. And I, I just, I don't think that's right. Now, what we have done is, Mr. Huff, per your request, my girlfriend has some sheets here that I can give to whoever needs them of requests at the city. My, my page and myself have put together that we think need addressed. Again, I'm kind of worked up right now, a little nervous, to be honest. But at the same time, I want a resolution. We spoke about this on Friday. I want a resolution. I don't want to fight. That's one of the reasons why I did not call the news, because we've tried that route, and it hasn't worked. My main goal here is just to get a resolution for all of these things. I don't want to villainize anybody. I don't want to blast anybody on social media. I just want to try to get some resolutions made, to try to get some of these people some relief that they need. It was very, it put me in a very dark place to see some of these stories, ladies and gentlemen, that I heard from some of these families who are just trying to pay their bills and feed their families, and they can't because of $800, $900, $1,000, $1,200 utility bills. So, for that, again, thank you guys for your time today. Again, my girlfriend has sheets that Mr. Huff would like you guys to have.
So, do these sheets address all of the questions that you have? I mean, all of...
A good majority. There's a couple that me and Mr. Huff spoke about last week, about like solar panels and so on.
Okay, okay.
Obviously, that litigation isn't even close to being ready, so I left them off for the time being. I know it's a real confusing issue. But for the majority, yes, that is what we all have compiled and thought...
Because this is helpful to give us the time to now go back, answer these, and get that information to you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, my information is very public. I can give anybody my phone number at any time. I'm willing to speak to anybody. I'm kind of the de facto leader for some of these people now, by default.
Nothing wrong with that.
So, I would be more than happy to sit down with anyone, as I have with Mr. Huff, and talk about this, just so we can come up with some type of resolution. Now, again, this list is just some things that we feel need changed. We can always sit down at the negotiation table and figure it out. But I think we can all agree, everyone in this room today, and everybody here, something needs to be done about this. It's been going on for too long. So, for that, I thank you.
No, thank you for coming forward, seriously.
And we will take this list, and we will get answers to this. And I think our plan is to give you the answers, but we're also going to do like some type of public information as well for people that may not be following your Facebook page, but just to educate people kind of as to why things are the way they are, or to look more into that, whatever the issues are. So, appreciate having the list, because that helps, so we know how to respond. Is there any other public...
Hi, my name is Tanya Blair. I own a real estate company here in town. I also own three other buildings. I have a, excuse me. I currently have a house that is sitting empty. I have received two $200 bills for the house. There's a dehumidifier running. There may be a realtor that is showing the house, may leave a light on. Other than that, there is nothing going on. I've checked the specs with my dehumidifier. It should be costing me $30 to $40 a month. And when I come, we just updated all the electric, put all new service in, new meter, and I came here to talk to the City of Pickwa and say, hey, what's going on? I can show you the bills from before we changed the meter. They're $70, $80. I don't mind paying my fair share, but to pay more is kind of, you can't tell me. My bill at home was $158, and we have a house, a barn. You know, I'm not on City of Pickwa, I'm on Pioneer, but we live in this house. We're using the electric. So, how can I use more in the City of Pickwa when I'm not using any electric at all, other than a dehumidifier?
What's the...
No refrigerator, no stove, gas water heater.
How long has it been vacant?
The house, what's the address of the house?
The address of the house is 134 Linden.
How long has it been vacant?
It has been vacant since August. We renovated the house, and I now have it on the market to sell. And with the history of the utility bills, when I get asked, when I'm going to sell this house, someone says, well, I want to see your utility bills, I have to disclose that to them. And now, I'm, who wants a $200 bill when they're not, they know no one's living there. They're going to see it when they go through it. I mean, it's obvious. I mean, there's nothing plugged in other than the dehumidifier. So, that's my concerns, and I hope you guys will address the issues. I do not think it's right for them to try and charge me $50 to come out and check this brand-new meter that they put in. We spent a lot of money getting the service head, the wires, everything. We put, you cannot sell a house in the state of Ohio with fuses in it anymore. This house had 60 watts going into it before. It now has 200 amp service. Everything's been upgraded. It's been checked by the county, the city, everybody's checked it, the electrician. So, I don't see anything being an error, so.
When was the meter put in?
I believe, it was still cold outside, so I'm thinking like March.
Last March?
No.
Oh, recently?
Just recently, and then the, so it could have been February, between February and January. I'm sure that we could pull it up
Okay.
from the bills, if you want to look at my bills. I will show you those.
Why does it cost $50 to check?
That's what I wanted to know. And it, they, I'm like, this is a brand-new meter. You just put it in. Why do you want to charge me $50 to check this brand-new meter? And they said, well, that's the rule, and that's what you have to do. So, I've kind of put off doing that, but my husband's now telling me maybe that's what I need to do to get the ball rolling. So, that's why I'm here, because I have concerns. I mean, and there's people in this town that can't afford these bills, just like Jay said. I mean, you know, we need to be more considerate of people in this town and, and try to help them and not hinder them. But, that's my opinion. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'm here tonight because of the utility bills. My name's Mike Worley. I'm at 528 New Street. I retired. I'm 65. I was living in a single dwelling by myself, and I got this 360-some-dollar utility bill. I'm like, how can that be? So, I go down, and she's, oh, well, there's a mistake here. If there's just you living there, it should, you should be under a 1.0 instead of a 2.0. But I didn't understand that. If you read the meter, I don't see no 2.0, dah dah dah. And she says, well, that, it'll work itself off your bill as time goes. Well, it didn't. I paid that $360 bill. The next month, it did drop to about half of that, but I just didn't understand. So, in the last couple of years, two and a half years, I've been watching other utility bills. I know some single ladies that, $180 utility, you're living there by yourself? Now, I have my daughter and grandson move in with me, and I've got a $128 bill. How is one person getting a $168 water utility bill, sewer bill? And there's just so many irregularities. I don't understand that there's something there that's just not clicking. And I'm on a fixed income, so that really hurt me that month.
Yeah.
And, and it didn't come off. Now, now I'm renting, so, you know, you're, you're sitting on my $200 deposit until I go somewhere else, and then I have to pay another $200 deposit. And I did that years back, but it took three months to get that $200 back, because I didn't want it applied to my bill. You know, I wasn't going to be using that service in the future. So, I just wanted to share that, that I do see some irregular billing out there with some people. And in my case, it's a lot of single people, retired, fixed income, that this really can put a hurt on us from one month to the next.
Can somebody...
I don't know where those irregularities are coming from.
Yeah. Can somebody explain what the 1.0 and 2.0...
We'll have to get you information.
Okay, okay.
What was your address again? I'm sorry.
Sir?
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 What was your address again?
Your address?
528 New Street.
528 New Street. Okay, we're going to check in on it.
Okay, well, that at the time was that, I'd have to get the other dress, address on Wilson Street. The only thing I could think is that if it was vacant, someone come in, and not the city, and turned the water on while it was vacant and used it, and then went out and turned that off. Now, that's illegal to do, but I know it happens out there. So, then here comes someone new that's renting, and they get this huge utility bill, and that wasn't mine. That was a previous, if it could be the landowner or the previous renter, but I'm the one that got gouged for it. So, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
On the other end of the spectrum from him, my name's Leslie Lewis. I live at 510 Second Street. We have four people in our household. A few years back, I had eight people in our household, had more kids at home then. It was a heat wave. One July, we had the air on full blast, pretty much 24/7. We filled up a 3,000 gallon swi, gallon swimming pool in our backyard, which we had to pay the sewer for, even though we didn't use the sewer for it. And our bill that month was $413. It, okay, we ran the air 24/7 for a month. Understandable, kind of understandable. This past winter, we're down to, like I said, four people in our house, two adults, a teenager, and a preteen. We have a gas furnace. Our bill for December was over $400. In the winter, no AC on, and a gas furnace. How do you explain that? I mean, and we can go from, when they put the new meter in, our bill about doubled the following month. We went from like $260 to almost $500 the next month with the new meter. Okay, we did nothing different from last month to this month. Heat, you know, furnace is on, there's still some chilly nights and stuff. I stay, I'm cold all the time. Nothing different. Our bill went from $380 last month to $260 this month. We did nothing different. Nothing. There's no rhyme or reason to why our bills are going up and down all the time. I've already told that our, my household, we're not having air conditioning on this summer, because God only knows, we won't be able to eat if we have it on. It's just simp, I mean, I work for two places here in town part-time, including the schools. I see what effect a high bill could have on these kids in my building. Over half the kids in the Pickwa City School System are on free or reduced lunch. And then, you're going to pop their parents with a $500, $800 electric bill one month? Them babies aren't going to be eating. Them babies aren't going to have electric at the home. No rhyme or reason. Well, I've stood downstairs in the line to pay my electric bill before. I had a check, so I didn't have any cash on me. The gentleman at the front of the line was 50 cents short on his bill. The nice people downstairs said, sorry, we're still going to have to shut you off tomorrow. 50 cents. 50 cents. Another friend here in town owned a business, that, business that recently went out of business, or went out. And, um, she paid the electric bill for the business one month. Must have miswrote the check or something. Got a disconnect notice from the city for a dime. The check was short by a dime. Y'all were going to cut off the electric at a business for a dime miswritten on a check. There's something wrong with our utilities. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name's Bill Jacque, I live on Sunset, 607 North Sunset Drive, here in Pickwa near Ward. And I was here last time and I had brought up the fact that I thought that there was an inordinate amount of shooting in downtown Pickwa Commissioner, the one who's not here now disagreed with me and said I was way out there. And certainly that, that Pickwa's like every other community and we don't have that problem. And certainly I, I couldn't have been, I had to have been wrong. So, I just did some research on it. And so, what I did, the only thing that I could find was shots fired. And, um, shots fired also includes, you know, some calls that really were firecrackers and some other things. But they definitely include the, the little wannabe punks running down our streets in, in Pickwa that are shooting off guns, little drug deals that are going bad, is what most of them are in our downtown. But just to give you some comparison, Pickwa had 200 shots fired in a two-year period.
What years? What year periods?
The, I, I, this, this is recent, so I, I went to, to the police department. I said, okay, this was last, in the last several weeks. I can go back two years.
Okay.
So, that's what they chose. So, then I went to Troy and did a request for public information. And they have 60 in the same period of time. And so, then I went to Oakwood and I said, well, I'd like to know how many you guys have. And they had zero. So, my point is, is we're not like every community. And, and when you lump us like we're, are, in every, every other community, then you're doing a disservice to, to, to our community because that means you're not looking at the problem. Now, in my point of view is the problem is drug-related. And so, I have spent the last several weeks looking, talking to people about, you know, just what, you know, what is our, what is Pickwa's drug policy? What is our drug enforcement policy? And of course, I'm hitting a stone wall. Nobody wants to tell me. And, and I have a lot of respect for our chief, but he doesn't want to answer me. And, you know, I, I just, I'm not going to go get an attorney and I don't want to get in the, you know, the, a big fight of the fact that you are required by law to give me the information. And, you know, and I, you know, there's no sense to get in the big fight about it. Just give me the information. What is our drug policy? I mean, the people in this community need to know. And I can, Chris knows, you know, he knows the communities like I know them. We're drug-infested in a lot of our little communities. You get down around Aubrey's and it's all meth. A bunch of meth heads running the streets. You get next, in my apartment downtown, you guys recently lovey-don', the next, my next-door neighbor, he was involved in that freaking three, three-pound heroin thing that got busted here just recently. And, you know, I don't know exactly what his involvement are, but all the drug dealers on the street do. And so, just to act like we don't have a drug problem here is ridiculous. We do. And so, I don't know why we can't come up with a policy, share it with the public, and see if there's something we can do about it. See if the community can come together and run these little punks out of our town. They're all over. Thank you.
Thank you. I do know that there's a task force that, in Miami County, that has been very active, that I know Chief Jameson is part of on drug issues within our county. So, I know that there is a lot of work that has been going on with that. And as well as the Protect, the Protect Board as well. So, I know that, I don't know if you want to say anything, Chief Jameson, or?
Sure. As far as the drug policy, what we run into a lot of times with public records requests is we're looking for some consistency. And the example of shots fired is, is, Bill illustrated a good example. It means something different with every community you might ask. So, there are standards for what defines a offense. Offenses of violence, drug offenses, property crimes. And those are the type of things that we look at in order to compare both trends that are happening in town and comparisons to other cities and things like that. And are, I would never say that we don't have a drug problem here. We, we most certainly do. But to exaggerate to the point that it's somehow, I think what some people are taking offense to is that it's somehow much worse than any other community around. And we have the stats to show that our drug offenses are going down. We have wonderful community engagement, the best that we've had in years, on people willing to give us drug information. And so, the last I knew specifically about providing a drug enforcement policy was that Mr. Jacque was going to check with some other cities and show me what, I didn't refuse to give him anything. We don't have anything called a drug enforcement policy. And much of what we do is related to drug enforcement. So, I'm looking for something that's less vague and more specific. And my understanding was that Mr. Jacque would be back with some policies from other places that I could see exactly what he's talking about and show him what we have here. But what I won't do is provide him information about what kind of specific drug investigations we're doing or what we know about things that are happening here. We do know things. And I appreciate the community's willingness to give us information. And I hope that continues. And I can just say, unfortunately, with drug investigations especially, we can't say, we can't give the whole community updates on what we're doing about a particular drug house or a particular drug dealer.
Well, and I have to say that, I have to say that through the work with the Coalition and the Hope Over Heroin and the things that are happening, and, and we do get, I get statistics every month on the overdoses within Miami County. And it's very similar from Pickwa to Troy to tip. I mean, the numbers kind of vary a little bit here and there. But each community tends to line up very closely to one another for those, for overdoses. So, I know there is a lot of work. There has been quite a bit of work for the past, I know. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, sir. Mr. Jacque, I'm talking. You sat down, okay?
Is this my five minutes or what?
You sat down.
Do I need to respond to what you guys are talking about? I'm the one who brought this up.
Just a second. Let me finish speaking, okay? And then if you want to come back up, you can, okay? I forgot what I was saying.
You're talking about working countywide on the drug issues?
Yes, yes. There's a lot of work countywide that has been going on. And I know there's a lot of people behind that. So, I think there is a lot of good work going on within Miami County.
And I know that there's drug enforcement that is going on in Pickwa. Having worked there for as long as I did, as I, as I did, and been the DARE officer and working with the fine officers that are there, they're still continuing to do the, the enforcement. They don't broadcast it because they can't, or they're not going to get the cooperation that the chief was talking about. But it is going on.
Yeah.
So, drug enforcement is going on.
Okay.
You want to come back up? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to suggest that somehow I'm asking for what our specific drug enforcement policy is, like I'm going to go alert a bunch of drug dealers is ridiculous.
I don't think he's saying that.
Okay. Well, that's what I understood you just to say.
I, I did.
That is kind of what I was saying from our conversation.
Okay. So, that's not sort of, I, I just want to know, what is our, what is our drug enforcement policy here?
I think he just shared the information with you.
That we enforce it. But we don't.
So, is there, is there a drug enforcement policy in this community? If it is, share it with the community. Tell us what it is.
He just, he just very, I think he just explained it.
He said that it was too varied and too complicated to do. When you do a request for public information, that's not what the law says. The law says that you need to answer the question. Doesn't make a difference how complicated this. That's his job. That's what the law requires.
No, the public information law requires a document that has to be specific to your request.
What, that was exactly my request. Can you provide to me any public documents that will show me exactly what is the policy on drug enforcement?
There is no document.
That's not what he said to me. He told me that they were too, he said to me, there were too many and too varied to provide to me. And that unless I had some specific request, he denied my request. Pure and simple. So, I'll make this request one more time. Public request.
Mr. Jacque?
Can I make my request and I'll, I'll drop it? I am requesting, I would like to know what the city of Pickwa's drug policy is, if there's any written policy that can be shared with the public. I would like to know what that information is. Please provide it.
And Chief Jameson just said, if you were listening.
Go ahead, repeat it. Go ahead.
And Chief Jameson just said.
I need Margaret Quox.
You don't need to comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have heard you. Thank you, Chief Jameson.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name's Captain Jenkins. I own rental properties in Pickwa and I live on North Downing Street. One of my questions is, is you want people to beautify Pickwa, but you refuse to take what they're sitting out. Now, you want yard cleanup, but what they can't, what they can't put in a bag, you're not going to take. Uh, we're limited on what we can stick in this garbage can, but you raise our prices. You take our recycling bins that you're making money off our recycling. Is that not correct?
Actually, no.
No?
No.
Then why is it recycling?
It's, it's at a cheaper rate. If we recycle, what we have to pay at the transfer station in the county, it's cheaper than trash. So, it's not as much cost.
So, it's, it's, it's not, you're not recycling it?
Yes.
So, how's that a benefit to the people?
It is being recycled. They just take it at a lesser cost.
A lesser cost. I seen them pick my trash up there. They, they put the recycling bin right in the trash truck. Are we not being, how's that helping the world when it's recyclable, it can be recycled, and it's thrown in the trash truck? You know, I'm thinking, why are we putting things in it? It makes me think, why do I want to recycle? Well, it ain't helping us any. The city, the people living in this city, where's our benefit in this? You know, uh, they, they quit taking, they quit that, what, eight or 10 years ago? Taking what people sit out and trash clean up? How's these elderly people supposed to get their yard beautified when they don't own a pickup truck like I do? They can't take it to the incinerator. But, but you're going to take it them the way it looks? Can they afford to pay somebody to do that? No, not with the high utility bills they're getting. You know, there's a problem with your utility system that's been an ongoing problem. I can go down to the city department unit, they tell me, well, maybe you've got water running. I'm a landlord. No. I'm very cautious on sight and sound on everything I own. Or there's an electrical outlet that's bad. How's they going to raise your rate? How's they going to raise your electric bill $200? See, there's no, there's no knowledge in what they're telling the people and there's, and, and the city's not looking into what their problems are or what it could be. They're just assuming. So, where's the answers at? You know, you can understand why people are frustrated in this town. You know, this, this, this town's going to go bankrupt. And you guys are all putting, painting a pretty picture, which it, when it's not. I understand. I've been in Pickwa since 1972. I paid my tithes and I still continue to pay my tithes. But how's that, how's that helping the people out that run this town? What you're doing is you're, 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 you're going to, you're picking, there's no commu-, there's no industries. This town's blackballed. You know why? There's no breaks. You don't give these factory breaks. They're going to Sydney and Troy. They ain't coming here. But then who's paying for it? The, the people. You know, how's it going to work? You know, I don't know what, I'm just up here venting is what I'm trying to do. Uh, I don't know what my logic is in this, but somebody needs to be heard. And it ain't just you people.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, I will say that you, you started out talking about refuse collection.
Yes.
And I do know that our refuse, our sanitation workers are really good about picking up things that are not in, I mean, that are not in a trash can, I'm not in one of those trash cans or whatever.
Right. I, I understand. Now, they're sending only three bulk items a week. You know, uh, some people can't afford to haul that stuff away. They ain't got the means to haul that stuff away. So, what are they going to do? Let it sit on their porch and look, make it look trashy? Because people don't want to take it? I understand your trash collection. You know what's going on is they're, these trash collectors now, they're doing their job, but they're, they're, they're bitching about it. Because they got to pick this up or they got to pick that up. You know, where's it all going? Where can it go? You know, us people are cited, you know, us landlords, and I'm not a landlord. I invest money into my properties every year. And I'm not lazy about it. I just don't go collect money and put, put it in my pocket. I've been doing this for 36 years. You know, I, I picked on a garage down on Wood Street, scraped it down, completely down, cocked it, primed it in and painted it. You know what they told me? It's not done yet. I can look in plain view, five garages that are in desperate need of repair. Now, you picked on me because my name's an assistant and I'm a landlord? You know, I can't babysit these people that live in my properties. Then it's my responsibility. If they don't do something, I'm stuck with it. You know, it, it's aggravation is what it is. You know, one day I'm going to sell everything and I'll move, I'm going to move the hell out of this town. I've had enough.
Mm-hmm, sure, yeah.
There was a lot of confusion about the yellow papers that have been coming out. We spoke about this, Mr. Huff. Nobody really knows what is happening with the new trash system. Like, we read the paper, but even then, what the paper said, what we spoke about, Mr. Huff, two different things. So, I think that's a lot of the confusion of what he might have been saying is we don't know what is going to be able to be taken up and, and isn't. I didn't even know that you could get extra trash cans if you have extra trash. That wasn't on the paper. So, some transparency, letting some people know might go a little bit a long way in the trash issue. And as far as what he was talking about, as far as getting excuses from the utilities office, you really should tell them to stop telling people that phone chargers are responsible for high utility bills. Because $2 a year is the max that a phone charger will put it out. And I, I mean, so Mike, that was theirs. And that was just one out of like 10. So, just some, some better information flow, I guess.
Well, and I know that we have repeated numerous times, and believe it or not, people don't watch our commission meetings on TV a lot.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, you know, I mean, you know, so, I mean, typically, we don't have a lot of people here. But we have repeated numerous times from here about the trash cans. And this is the place that we get a lot of our information out, you know?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
And, and the fact that, you know, there's different sizes, because we have senior citizens for those trash cans. I had many come to me that didn't want the big ones. And so, you've got, we have three different sizes. So, you can get the smaller ones, which for our, our elderly are much easier to maneuver.
Absolutely. And that's something that me and Mr. Huff talked about.
Right.
But I don't think people are aware of that. And now you have their attention.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm also a minister. I served a church in this town for eight years. And we used to say, you can announce it from the pulpit. You can put it in the newsletter. You can say it 3,000 times and people still don't hear it.
I'm a promoter. I'm well aware of that.
So, I'm just saying, I mean, we try the best we can to get that information out there. We really do.
Put it on social media as well.
It's not good enough.
I think it is. I think it has been, hasn't it?
It has been. I mean, we have, we have tried every avenue. And the question is, are people going to read it? And, and even to the fact that we have those trash cans sitting down there at the utilities office. So, you can see the different sizes of, you know, what you can get.
Well, especially now, more than ever, you have everybody's attention.
Right.
Obviously. So, right now would be a good time for that. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great suggestion.
All right. Any other public comment?
Governor's here, 1616 West Grant. Notice, everybody in Pickwa's got the new trash cans now. I like to dispose of my old ones. And I set them out every week and they won't even take some.
Oh, you're trying to get rid of them and they won't take them?
Yeah, yeah.
The thumb away.
You know what? And I've had the same problem. I think you have to write on there or something to say, please take.
Please dispose or take away.
All right. Well, thank you. So, I need now.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to say one positive thing about the trash. Some of the containers are big for elderly, because I have a lot of elderly. I know that they're huge. And I only have to put mine out once a month sometimes. Recycle almost every week.
Yeah.
But one thing I've noticed in the past month, it's such a cleaner town. You got lids on trash cans. You've got lids on trash cans, the squirrels, the dogs aren't in them, they're not blowing across my yard.
Right.
Like, awesome, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Dave Johnson, 207 Maryville. I would just like to know how come we can't get access to like DPNL? Why are we kind of captive to like Pickwa Electric, we can't have competition?
It's actually, it's actually in the state code that municipalities control the utilities. And that's the way it's been for decades and decades. I think the, I think the Pickwa Power started, Ed, back in 1933.
Yeah, the power system started as a competitive alternative to Dayton Power and Light during the Depression. And over the years, the customers on their own accord switched to the city because the city had a more competitive, more reliable source. Now, the reliability, I know in the 70s and 80s was, was not great, but I know our reliability now is at really the top of the industry. So there were a few customers left a few years ago in Dayton, chose to basically remove all those customer lines, and there are no lines in the city anymore for Dayton Power and Light.
So at times, they have telemarketers that call, they call within a, everybody in a zip code and ask you to change over to DPNL, but in all reality, there is no DPNL. And that's just part of telemarketing, so...
I got one other question. You got this solar wind farm coming up over here. Is that money just going to be generated for the community or can a consumer see some kind of kickback?
I'm going to ask Ed too, because he's been highly involved with the development. It's actually, they're all privately owned, but Ed can share with you how that works as far as...
Sure, there's two solar generating facilities. One's in operation on Staunton Street, the side of the old Staunton School, and then the manure field is being built on 85 acres. And they're both projects that have come to Pickwa due to our membership in American Municipal Power. So that power that's generated from those projects directly feed into our system, and then we get an allocation of that power which basically helps lower our utility bills. The power that comes from this project is going to be the second cheapest source of power we have for our electric utility.
So keep in mind when he says that, that we have to buy the energy, we're talking about that. We, we have to purchase the energy, we don't generate it ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hopefully I'll be the last one. I'm Nick Ventura, 108 Gene Drive. My wife just asked me on my way out to ask and to find out for sure what the red light on the meters are for the utilities, for, for the new meters. She said she goes out and she's doing something at night and she sees this red light and it's coming from the meter. And I'm like, well, what is it? So I don't know.
Talking about your electric meter?
Yeah, the electric meter, the, the new meters they just put in.
Ed, he's our expert, so let him.
It's basically just showing that the meter's energized. We had a call the other day that someone's concerned, we came in and, and there was nothing wrong. The meter is energized, there's power flowing through the meter.
It wasn't following her or anything, was it?
No, I was just kind of curious if that, if that was like, if, if something, red usually means bad.
Yeah.
Usually, but, yeah, it just means it's active, it sounds like.
Thank you.
Thanks, tell Patty it's a bad...
All right, any other public comment? Okay. If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
Yes, I'm happy to report the South Street project has been just a horrible project we have been dealing with for some time. The street actually failed, collapsed due to a lot of, lot of rainfall. And we were quite concerned that possibly, well, we had to find out whether we had utility lines broken and was causing some of the problem or what it was. So we ended up starting to take out all the asphalt and we found underneath the road, back when the road was built, we actually had, it had been filled with concrete and wood and bricks and railroad tracks.
Oh, geez.
Trolley tracks. And all this stuff had just been dumped into the, into a fill without compaction or anything. And over a period of time, the water got in there and caused the road to fail. We had, we had to go in and camera all our utility lines in that area to make sure that they were not any breaks or anything that was causing any additional water to get into the base. And then we were also concerned about whether any washouts in the base and the fear of possible road caving in from, from that. So we had to end up taking everything out and rebuilding the entire base, which took quite some time. And then we had to wait on the weather to cooperate to be able to dry it out enough to where we could pave. And I say all that to kind of explain the whole situation on when it, when it takes us this long a time period to do a project, there are certainly extenuating circumstances that we're dealing with. But I'm happy to report that supposedly, weather permitting, we will be paving that tomorrow. So that's some good news for us on that. But I thought it was worth explaining since that's been an issue that a lot of people have questioned. The only other thing I'll mention is that we do have the McCullough statue dedication on Thursday at 11:00 a.m. And that statue was dedicated by, donated completely by Jim Dickey with Crown Equipment. And he will be here to also speak at 11 o'clock at the dedication. So we'd invite people to come out, I think it's a nice addition to the plaza. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. And I will say, people ask me all the time, why is the statue facing the way it is? It's because he's looking towards Washington, that's why it's faced. I had third graders ask me that question, so I like to make sure people know that. We'll start with Commissioner Lee for Commissioner's comments.
Well, I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight and all your questions, seriously. I mean, nothing ever gets accomplished and your knowledge does not get fulfilled if you don't come out and participate. This is your community, we're here to represent you, but we want you to ask the questions so that you can at least begin the process of feeling somewhat satisfied. So, Mr. Huff, we're able to get back with these people with the utilities and, and give them an update at some point in time.
Yes.
And so, you know, it, it's important to me and I know it's important to you guys. I have the same utility problems that you guys have. And I just run from my wife and just, because she, she's complaining to me about the same thing. So I, I hear the same issues and have the same issues and, and, you know, we'll ask the questions. And, you know, if they can be answered, they will be answered, seriously. I mean, but thank you guys for coming out and, and participating. I want to thank everybody who went to the taste of the arts, and Lorna always does a good job with that. And I want to thank Dave Short for his time on the commission. His work circumstances changed and he had to, he could not continue in his present role as commissioner, but his time on the commission, he was very, very knowledgeable, helpful, and we're missing, but we got to move on. So hopefully we'll, we'll have somebody else up here helping out and volunteering to participate in the city as well. And we wish Dave well, so, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner vote?
Well, I'd like to congratulate the Resident Pride people, they always do a nice job on their houses. I tell you, people, you're talking about your utilities, your own fixed income. Guess what? So am I. My water was up, the other month I found out what it was, got the plumber up, got it fixed. A little suggestion to, to people watching, maybe not you, but go around and feel your plugins for your extension cords. Where they plug in, if they're warm, they're drawing a lot of electricity through that, it tells me that the wire is undersized. Open up your breaker box, feel the breakers. If they're warm, you're drawing a lot of red, a lot of electric through there, which could be because of the wiring being undersized. You know, a lot of houses have 14 and 16 gauge wire when it should be 12. And when you run a whole bunch of electricity through a little thing, it draws more. Just a suggestion that you may be able to police some of your usage, might not cure it, might not do a thing, but it don't hurt to check. And when I moved into my house, it had 60 amp service. My bills were atrocious. I had it rewired, Pittsburgh Electric rewired my house, my bills, put 100 amp in and went way down. It went way down. The other year I had a bunch, I felt my breakers and I found out, boy, I was running something in the garage that was drawing a whole bunch of electricity. And I cut that out. You know, you just have to pay attention to what's going on. Might help you. I'm in the same situation as you people. I'm on Social Security and you got to make the most of what you got. So keep your eye on your usage, might help you some. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
I'd like to thank Dave Short for his service. It's really depressing that he had to resign because of a job. On the electric, I know this won't help that much, or, and Mike, depending on how many lights you have in your house. Buying LED bulbs, LED bulbs for 100 watt light, you get, it takes like 23 watts. So you save 77, that quick math, maybe, it's close. But that's one way to save, because I've, I've done that at my house to try and curb our electric use, because me and my wife both have a tendency to leave lights on. And it's a whole lot cheaper if you leave a light on when it's only using 23 watts instead of 100. That much I do know. The Resident's Pride Award winners, they always do a good job and it's nice to see all these houses in Pickwa. And I think that's it.
Thank you. I just have a few announcements. Graduation for Pickwa High School is Friday, so good luck and congratulations to all our graduating seniors here in the community. And Memorial Day Parade is Monday, so hopefully we have good weather for that. I have not looked to see what the weather looks like, but I'm hoping that it will be beautiful for the parade and then, of course, all of the Memorial Day activities. Also, the farmer's market down in front of the library opens up on the 30th of May, so it is getting to be that time of year for warmer weather and the farmer's market and a variety of other things happening here in our city. So those are the only comments I have. And now we need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
So moved.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned to executive session then.